Hot and muggy day for a few days. And we'll go ahead and start our commission meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, good morning, everyone. Meeting documents are available for review down in the end next to Commissioner Heiburger. Just a reminder to silence your cell phone. And Carol is here if anyone needs a listening device. So that takes us to routine business. The first item is to consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So move, second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is to approve the commission meeting minutes for May 26, 2020.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item are bills to be paid in the amount of $665,777.23.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? Commissioner Barth.
Today's bills include six funerals for $13,000 and 10 occurrences of ambulance transporting decedents for another $4,000. And there's another bill I had a question on. Do you have an answer, Olivia?
Yes.
Okay. There's a bill, looks like a legal bill, for an individual for $21,000. And it's stuck out to me.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. There are a number of reports there that I would recommend for everybody's review. Lots of really good information in those monthly reports, so I'd recommend everyone take a chance to look at those. That takes us to item five, personnel actions. I'd consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Move for approval?
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Good morning, Jen. How are you?
Good morning. Genetics with Human Resources, we wanted to recognize significant employee anniversaries for June 2020. With five years of service, we have Lenora Guile. She's a correctional officer in the jail. Several people with 15 years of service, Craig Butler, who was a sergeant in the sheriff's office, Joe Bosman, who's a captain, Julie Hofer, who is, of course, our public advocate, and Reese Dieters, who's a juvenile correctional officer at JDC. We also have two people with 20 years of service. Wade Hanson is a corporal in the jail, and Janelle Ingles, who is the pretrial coordinator leader for pretrial services. So we just want to thank them for all of their years of service. And I think we have somebody here who is celebrating the anniversary. I don't know, Joe, if you wanted to say anything?
Come on, Joe. Don't be shy.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Joe Bosman with Sheriff's Office. I've had the pleasure of working in front of everyone here in the commission office for the last several years in my command staff role. But throughout my entire career with the Sheriff's Office, it has been a joy and an honor to serve the residents of Minnehaha County. I really enjoy working for the Sheriff's Office. It's a great place to work. We have fine deputies that work there. It's an honorable integrity type of job, and we appreciate the support that the commission has given to our office over the years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
After 20 years, it seems like a long time, you know? But then you get older, and 30 years seems like...
Can all go by in the blink of an eye. That's what I've learned.
We also want to recognize all of our volunteers for May of 2020. In May, we had 253 people who volunteered their time throughout a number of different departments in the county. The museum, sheriff's office, public defender's office, public advocates' office, JDC, emergency management, jail, and safe homes. We want to thank them for donating their time and helping our organization.
All right. Thank you very much. It's always impressive to see the list of employees and their years of service to the county and the list of volunteers. Those are both very impressive lists, so thank you.
Okay, my last order of business, I guess, is our annual affirmative action plan. Thanks, Trish. This morning, I'm going to share with you the results of that plan. A link to the full plan and the charts were sent out to commissioners and department heads already, as well as our diversity committee. And we met last week. We went through the plan in great detail. The charts that I'm going to discuss with you today look at employees at county in protected classes. I know you're very familiar with them. I talk to you about them every year, so I'll share the results, and then I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have as well. All the charts are organized by job group, and we are comparing workforce availability to our employee demographics. And the workforce availability in the charts will always be that red column, and we're comparing the column right next to it. So this first chart looks at employees who are minorities here at county. As you can see, we exceed our goals in three of the different job categories. We have very slight underutilization in the remaining four job categories. And in fact, if we were to hire only one minority in each category, we would offset that underutilization. Our next chart compares or looks at the females employed at county. We're setting really well here as well. We exceed our goal in four of the job categories. In one of the remaining categories, if we were to hire only one female, we'd offset that underutilization. There is then slight underutilization in two of the remaining job categories. Both are very small job groups. We had limited hiring opportunities in 2019 to even change those, but we know that this is an area of focus for us. Our next chart is our protected veterans here at the county. Our goal for this particular group is a nationwide benchmark. It's 5.9%. And we apply this just to our workforce as a whole versus individual job groups. So we well exceed the goal in this particular category. 9.51% of our employees here at county are protected veterans. And we do a review based on the specific job groups in this chart, too, just to provide information about where they're located. But we're very happy to exceed our goals in this area. On our next chart, we have a 7% national goal that's applied throughout all of our job groups for individuals with disabilities who are employed at county. We exceed that benchmark in five job categories, and we'd meet the benchmark in the other two by hiring just one or two individuals with disabilities, so we're very close in this job group, too. The next chart compares the race or ethnicity of our employee minority group, which is the green part of the column, to our workforce availability, which is shown in blue. And we wouldn't expect to have, of course, an exact one-to-one ratio. As you can see, we're well above in some areas. We appear to have less representation in other areas. A few years ago, we added the column or the option for our applicants and our employees to select two or more races as their background. So since then, we've seen a lot of those percentages in the singular categories slide over to two or more races. Nearly 9% of our employee group overall are minorities here at county, and the workforce availability from the census data that we used to compare against is about 6.5. So we're very pleased to show a higher percentage in this group. And the final chart that we look at is a snapshot of our workforce's gender. A little over 40% of our workforce are female. It's a slight increase from last year. Our workforce availability is about 48%, so not a great disparity there. While we don't have any strong areas of concern, of course, we're going to continue to monitor our job groups throughout the year, particularly in those areas where we are underutilized. We want to ensure that we're encouraging diversity in all of our work groups and that the county's employment, employees represent our population that we're serving here at the county. Happy to answer any questions that anybody might have on the plan.
Questions for Jen?
Otherwise, I'd ask for formal approval of the plan. Once it's approved, then I'll ask elected officials to sign to indicate their support of affirmative action here at the county.
I'll make a motion to approve the plan.
Second.
Motion and a second. Just before we vote, I just want to thank you. I know this is a tremendous amount of work, but just like anything else, if you don't measure goals like this and pay attention to where you are, you don't ever make any progress. And so we really appreciate the work that the Human Resources Department does in reaching out and using creative methods to recruit so that we can continue to do better in these areas. And so thank you. We did have a motion and a second. Are there any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I have the document, and I'll pass it around for signatures.
Thank you. We also have a request from Chris Lilla, who's the Director of Equalization. He has asked to have the statistician position within his department reviewed. After we met with Chris, we reviewed the position. Our office agrees that the responsibilities and the minimum qualifications do warrant reclassification for this position. So we're recommending that the commission approve reclassification of this position from a pay grade 15 to a 16 effective June 13, 2020. If it is approved, there wouldn't be any immediate budgetary impact. The individual who is currently in the role would retain her current rate of pay. And Chris is here, too, if you have any specific questions for him.
Commissioner Karski.
As liaison to Equalization Office, Chris did visit with me about this before submitting it, and I'm fully in favor of it.
Any other comments or questions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much for your hard work.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. Good morning. How are you?
Good morning.
Takes us to item six, abatements recommended for approval. I'll let you...
Thank you, commissioners, for just taking action on my statistician position. I really appreciate it, and I know my staff member will as well. So on to item six, abatements. We've got quite a list again of these again. The good news this time is they're all recommended for approval. The majority of those are one set of things, and I'll just touch on the first one. DND Enterprises, item A, its parcel number 40660 for 2019, and the property tax amount of $3,867.2. This one here was an office error on our part. They'd asked to combine parcels, which happened, and the old parcel failed to get voided out, so it received an inadvertent tax bill. I don't know if you want to take action on that one individually, and then the rest of them, we can kind of group together, except for the last one.
Okay. Yep, we'll go ahead and take action on that one. Are there any questions for Chris?
Move.
Approve A.
Second.
So a motion and a second to approve abatement for DND Enterprises, revocable trust. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry, roll call vote.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, Olivia.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger? Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. So that takes us to the next grouping.
Yep. Item B through R are all the same scenario. City has acquired property, and obviously, the city is an exempt entity. So from the time they take possession and ownership, then at that point in time, if they own it more than 15 days of the month, that entire month is tax exempt. So these are all affecting the taxes in the rear for all of these, so they're the same scenario. So item B, City of Sioux Falls, parcel number 62962, 2019 property tax in the amount of $8.25. Item C, parcel number 10445 for the 2019 property tax in the amount of $369.05. Item D, parcel number 51312 for the 2019 property tax in the amount of $415.33. Item E, parcel number 51296, 2019 property tax in the amount of $543.91. Item F, parcel number 51325 for the 2019 property tax, amount of $664.37. Item G, parcel number 51324, 2019 property tax in the amount of $599.52. Item H, parcel number 51294, 2019 property tax in the amount of $230.92. Item I, parcel number 51310, 2019 property tax, the amount of $487.13. Item J, parcel number 51289, 2019 property tax, the amount of $470.70. Item K, parcel number 51335, 2019 property tax, the amount of $693.96. Item L, parcel number 33291, 2019 property tax, the amount of $1,214.91. Item M, parcel number 33361, 2019 tax, the amount of $3,174.93. Item N, parcel number 11142, 2019 property tax, the amount of $1,508.83. Item O, parcel number 14240, 2019 property tax, the amount of $1,302.69. Item P, parcel number 14242, 2019 property tax, the amount of $914.90. Item Q, parcel number 14244, 2019 property tax, the amount of $508.68. And item R, parcel number 44585, 2019 property tax, the amount of $222.95. It's a lot of reading.
You want to read it again?
Yep. Item R. Parcel number 44585.
I'm just teasing. Totally teasing.
Yeah. $722.95.
Move approval of items B through R.
Second.
Yes, Commissioner Barth.
Chris, why is the city getting a break? I mean, why did they acquire all these properties?
You know, a lot of them, some of these are right-ofways. Some of these, I think, are some flooded property. I don't know all the details on all of them, just when the ownership comes over from the city. I think some of these are some of the higher tax amounts are some flood-prone properties that they've acquired. The lower amounts, the smaller amounts, are a lot of those are right-ofways and additional takings of people's front yards and things to expand roads and corners and things. So there's a multitude of reasons.
Thank you.
All right. I lost track. Is there a motion?
There was.
Motion and a second.
Roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger? Aye. Karski? Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
And item S is the other anomaly in this week's list. This is a property owner that has built some property that, you know, once it's complete, they are tax exempt and have made the request for tax exemption. However, at the time when it's constructed and we value it, we don't know that it's tax exempt. So once it's done and they are into that, then we've got to retroactively look at that and say they did meet the criteria and they did qualify. So we're asking for an abatement amount for Cleveland Center Apartments for parcel number 30663 for 2019 property tax, the amount of $13,394.94.
Any questions for Chris? Commissioner Benega.
Chris, what's the status of the owner? I don't need to know the name, but is it a nonprofit, a church, a tax-exempt project? Okay. So are they...
And they're... Let me look at their...
Are they funded by tax credits?
Nope. They're charitable exemption. Oh, limited liability partnership as well. Thank you. Lawyers.
I know you said that. True tenderness and love. So, all right. Are there other questions regarding the Cleveland Center Apartments? Commissioner Barth.
So are they renting these apartments to low-income people at below-market value?
They should be, yes, if they're qualifying for that exemption.
And if they're not, do we find out? I just drove by some apartments today on Sixth Street that was a two-bedroom apartment for only $1,000 a month.
Yeah, you know, some of those, we're very limited on our research capabilities on what we can or cannot do. I would sure hope that as they apply annually to the state, that the state is reviewing that for that charitable, that FEIN number, that tax-exempt identification. You know, that's really where the premise comes from. We don't decide if they're tax-exempt or not. The state or the federals do. And then with that number, that issuing of that tax-exempt number is what then we receive, and then they make that application to us. So we have to take it on faith that if they have that number, that they meet the criteria that's required by them by law.
Other questions? Commissioner Benega.
Just one more, Chris. So is this approved by the South Dakota Department of Housing and Urban Development?
You know, again, that one, I don't know for certain. Again, my research capabilities are fairly limited, so I don't know if they state on here, because the tax-exempt number is a federal number, so I don't know if they run through South Dakota Housing on that or not. That I don't know. They're a federal 501(c)(3) exempt.
And that's the basis for the...
That's the basis.
For the exemption here.
Correct.
It really is not the fact that it's because they have tax-credit housing. It's fact that the property is owned and operated for charitable purposes.
Correct.
As far as we know.
Yes. Some of the other ones that are tax-credit, we do get that notification from those. And again, some of those, it depends on which one. Some are state, some are federal.
That's my question, because if you're applying and getting tax credits, the information that you get is a little more detailed than what we get. It's just a limited partnership.
Now, this one, I don't have that.
I know. Nothing we can do about that.
No.
Anything else?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
And just for Commissioner Benega, I don't think it's by law. I'm penalized if I vote against it. But I do kind of wonder if, on some of these types of things, if we shouldn't have the owners of the property come in and explain their operation, because do we trust everything that Washington DC does? Do we trust everything that PIR does? Do we trust everything that someone can finagle legally? I have questions.
Any questions anybody else has that any of us can answer? All right, then I would consider a motion.
Approve.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger? Karski? Barth? Bender?
Aye. Motion passes four to one. Thank you.
Do it, Wood.
All right, thank you. All right, so item seven, notices and requests, there are none. Item eight, planning and zoning notices, there are none. Item nine, petition for compromise of lien, there are none. So that takes us to opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment? Good morning.
Good morning. I ran into Commissioner Heiburger and Commissioner Bender outside, and I gave them a sort of update what's going on at the treasurer's office. I'd like to say it's better than it is, but the building being closed for a number of weeks and the COVID virus thing have caused a lot of problems down there. Currently, the wait is back to two and a half hours, which was two and a half to three hours when I came. We had it down to 15, 20 minutes or less, and same day to next day turned around on the mail. Now they're waiting in line out there in the hot sun for two and a half hours, and I don't find that acceptable. I think there are things that could make that a little better. Will it make it perfect? Probably not. If you maintain that social distancing thing, I don't think you can get everybody in this building, but we can certainly get a lot more people than we did before. We changed from being able to come in the main door downstairs to the indoor. There's not a lot of space down there. They end up going out in the hot sun. And they have indicated to me that they don't think that's acceptable, and I guess I personally agree with them. We have been working, a couple Saturdays, we worked, and we have been coming in an hour early for a couple of weeks. It's not going to handle the problem. I guess I have a budget that's pretty limited, and I'm asking, I guess, from some kind of guidance from you as to whether or not it would be okay if we continue to work some Saturdays and come in an hour early to accommodate the public.
Commissioner Heiburger.
Pam, you and I had this conversation a couple weeks ago about using overtime budget. At that time, there was $8,000 in your budget, and you may very likely have run through that. I don't know. We just said in the hall we'd check on that. But that was a suggestion that we made, is that you use Saturday mornings or all-day Saturday, if that works, depending on your staff, and that you do come in an extra hour. And I'm just really happy to see you're doing it, and I think that this commission would be happy to extend those overtime hours if we have to, the budgeted, because this is unprecedented times. And so you and I did have this conversation recently, and I'm glad to see you're doing it.
Yes, we did, and I did point out that technically, we'd already been doing that before you brought it up. So we were already doing those things. But I do want you to know that we could possibly, we're also short two employees. One employee got, his wife got transferred to Texas, and so his last day was Friday. And then we have another employee who retired because of the COVID virus. She thought it was too germ-y of an atmosphere handling the money, working with the people. So we're also too short. Those people have been hired. They start, one of them starts this week, and I don't know if the next week, maybe the next one starts. So, but it's that kind of, it's a storm that came together at the wrong time, but I'm sure, like you, you want to provide better service to the customers in Minnehaha County. And I just wanted you to know that in order to do that, we're probably going to have to work Saturdays and still continue to come in an hour early.
Commissioner Karski.
So I was here this morning at 7:00, and there's a line. So they were, you were processing people at 7:00 this morning?
We came in an hour early to do the mail.
Okay, so you're not, people aren't getting in an hour early?
But I'm not taking people away then from the window that it would be available to do the mail, but we also have a backlog of mail. When we were closed, they had to mail everything in. Well, when you mail in a title transfer, title transfers are very complicated. People forget to sign their title apps. They forget to sign their titles. The dealer may not have given them what they want. They might not have a purchase agreement or so. So they didn't find out about that. We were, at that point, six and a half weeks behind. So we got it, didn't get their process done. We did get caught up by working those couple Saturdays and coming in early, and then this hit, and the governor's executive order did give people 60 days, at least for the March and May renewals. That doesn't apply to anything after that. So those people will be paying penalties and interest.
So the, my tags renew in June. I have till June 30. I have no grace period. I have to have them renewed by that time.
But the March and May's did get a grace period.
And so the people that were in line at 7:00 are waiting for your office to open up at 8:00.
That would be correct.
So I mean, there were probably 40 people in line already at 7:00.
Yeah. Well, you can tell, it's about two and a half hours if you get to the Dakota side door. And if you go past that, like to the courthouse, it gets closer to 3:00.
Okay. And then have you done anything for...
I've been handing out little things and putting flags up to see how long it's taking, and they tell me as well.
I'm okay with overtime. If you could open, even open an hour early to help people out, while it's still cool, that I think would be nice.
Well, the problem, well, you did get tents out there.
Yep, there are some tents over the sidewalk.
But they're not enough to cover the public, but...
But, you know, do the mail after the end of the day. Help people through the beginning of the day when it's cooler out, get them out of the line. But what about, and Pam, this is your office. You're an elected official. People being able to call in, especially those of special needs, handicaps, disabilities, that type of thing, where they could say, I'd like, you know, can I come in at, or where you set up appointments for people to come in, and they are specially processed, people with that type of need don't have to sit outside? Have you thought about doing that?
Well, we, until you change where the building, how they come in the building, the handicap people were coming down at the other end, and the handicap window was there. When you move them up to the back windows, somehow, they're ending up in that line. I'm not sure exactly why. They can go directly. They don't have to wait in line.
So...
They can come in. They're supposed to be able to come in, and they have been doing that for at least as They can come in, they're supposed to be able to come in, and they have been doing that for at least as long as I've been there.
So people that have needs like that can come in, they don't have to sit outside. Okay, thank you.
And we try to watch for them. You have Ken down there, and Ken and I have been watching for them. And to expedite things for people, we've also have people out there going through the paperwork that people have, so you don't stand there for three hours and then find out that you don't have your title application, or you don't have your purchase agreement, or so, yeah.
Commissioner Heiburger.
Just, so he mentioned he has tags, and just a reminder, which I know your office is already doing this, but just a reminder, if you have tags, dude, don't come down here, do it on the kiosk. Or you can mail it in, but I would suggest it's doing them on the kiosk and not coming down here and standing in line. The other thing is, is when you were getting those mail, where people didn't have all the information, were you guys putting a note in there that said, hey?
And we called them first, if we could get them. And then if they didn't have voicemail or something, we just returned it back with a paper that says the things that, and it has a list of different things that could, you might need. We highlighted the things that they did need. At first, we just sent out without highlighting and listed in that, we thought they would be able to figure out what they needed. But now we've gone to highlighting it because they don't know, so.
Commissioner Benega.
Pam, what about rerouting the line through the cooler part of the building first, and then sending them out toward the hotter part of the?
And I can speak to that, because that really, there's been a group of staff that I've been part of, that we've met every single day since COVID started, and we've been trying to troubleshoot issues. And we did try to have a meeting with all the department heads, particularly for folks on first floor, to plan the reopening. And to, and we invited Jeff Echoff from the city, from SOAR, to come over. As we tried to talk through the social distancing and the cleaning, you know, the sanitation and all of the issues, that plan was put in place in order to space people out in the building and allow all the other offices to have people stack up for services. That the best option seemed to be to go out the south door, because that would be most of the people, and that's why we put the tents out there. We did think of a lot of different options to try to address that, and we look at it every single day. Honestly, we met this morning and talked about it again. But that is why we bought, that's why we have the tents out there. That is why we hired somebody to direct traffic downstairs for the whole entire month of June. The commission has funded a position to help hand out information so people understand options that they have other than standing in line. So we have tried to take a lot of steps and thought through that. We gave Pam an opportunity to participate in that, and she chose to leave relatively early into that meeting. But, you know, we are trying to balance the whole issue of social distancing and COVID with providing as good a customer service as we can. And I don't know, we're in phase one of what we have is a three-phase process to reopen the building and get people back to whatever the new normal is. And we're just in phase one of that. And I anticipate that we will try to alter that in the future, but right now, that's what we're trying to do. It was also very unfortunate for Pam and her office that the second day we had the building open, the entire state system went down, so then that backed us up even more. So we recognize that there are some real challenges here, and we are trying to do everything we can to make sure the public is aware of all their options that they have to do business online or remotely. But we also recognize that Pam and her office have a lot of challenges right now, and so we're continuing to monitor that situation.
And just for your own information, I did leave that meeting early, but I did send somebody up. I had an appointment with somebody that I had to deal with in the office, so. But it doesn't matter, what we're doing now doesn't seem to be the best plan, and it doesn't seem to be working in the best interest of the public. There is no reason why, even with social distancing, those people can't line up in that building and more of them be inside than outside.
We have looked at that. We can only get about eight more people, eight to ten more people in. And then we have the issue with all the other folks trying to get through the building. So, but Pam, we will continue to visit with you about that, and I appreciate you bringing that up today, so.
Okay, and so I just wanted to give you an update and indicate that we're trying to do, but it's probably going to require a little bit extra money to.
And I do think Commissioner Karski had a great idea that if, you know, if you guys are going to be here at seven, perhaps, since there already are people lined up at that time, that you could try to serve those folks, and we could try to figure out a different time to work on mail, but that's up to you ultimately.
Well, the problem is that there's no time of the day that we can do any mail, because I can't take anybody away from the window. I wouldn't do it, because that means those people have to wait even longer. So if we come early and do the mail, then they're free to operate with the public.
Or Saturday hours for the public or something, but you know.
Yes, and we did that. We did what we thought we could afford within our budget, so.
Well, we'll try to support you budgetarily if you're willing to do some other things.
I just didn't want to, I just wanted you to be aware that we'll probably have to have a supplement or something to do that.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming this morning. All right, any other public comments this morning? Seeing none, that takes us to regular business. First item is a public hearing to consider retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license application submitted by CCNF Retail, Inc. Olivia, good morning.
Good morning. Olivia Larson with the Auditor's Office. We have a public hearing for CCNF Retail, Inc. for their 2020-2021 renewal application. The reason this is necessary is because they received a violation within the current licensing period, and this did take place back in November, at which time you were briefed about it. For your reference, prior to this violation, they had not had one since 2014, and at the time, they were owned by Harms Oil Company, and in 2016, they transferred to CCNF Retail. And then Friendly's did submit a document stating what they've done since then and how to avoid violations in the future. That should be included in your packet, and I do believe we have a representative here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Questions? Is there a representative here today? If you want to come forward and introduce yourself, maybe it'd be helpful if you just could explain to us and the public the steps you've taken.
Sure. Good morning, Blaine Corlett, Operations Manager for Friendly's. I sent you over a packet or a copy of kind of what we've done. Ultimately, the associate was terminated the day after failed sting. That's just the company policy. All current associates have been served safe, certified alcohol trained through the South Dakota Retailers Association. Our current system allows us to backtrack to see if IDs are actually scanned at the POS now. They have the ability to type in an age, but we also have the ability to scan it, and we can go back and see exactly what's happening on transactions now. Are you scanning the ID? Are you typing a number in? We frequently go back, check, make sure that IDs are actually being scanned as opposed to just a date being put in. Fifty-dollar spot bonus for everybody that passes a sting. And then probably most importantly, we just discuss our duty as retailers to keep age-restricted items out of hands of people that are under 21. With tobacco going to 21, took a little bit of the complication out of it for cashier to be able to say everybody's 21 with the exception of lottery. But we just continue to have those conversations around, it's our duty to make sure that we're doing the right thing in keeping age-restricted items in the hands of people that can buy them.
Commissioner Karski.
Mr. Corlett, thanks for being here this morning. I hope you pass on to your employees the fact that you got to be here this morning because you failed an alcohol sting. It's a hassle, I mean, for you, and I'm sure you're the one who sold the alcohol. I believe they were arrested at the point that they sold it too. Is that not?
Correct.
Yeah, and then they got fired. And if they would have just done the right thing, they would have got fifty bucks, right? Appreciate your business plan or your plan for how you take care of things. I'm comfortable with renewing your license, and again, I know it was a hassle for you to come down here, but I think your employees need to know too, that you were really happy to be here today.
They do.
Facetiously, of course, yes. So thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments this morning? All right, I would entertain a motion.
It's a public hearing, so we have to.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's a public hearing. Thank you for that reminder. Is there anyone here that would like to speak against the renewal of this license? Do you have anything further that you wanted to say?
No, you're not.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments, questions? Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger? Karski?
Aye.
Bar?
Please, aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you for being here this morning. All right, the next item is a public hearing to consider a retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license submitted by 38 Roadhouse. Olivia.
Thank you, Olivia Larson, Auditor's Office again. This is a similar situation. 38 Roadhouse also failed a compliance check in November, and so they need a public hearing in order to approve their 2020-2021 malt beverage application. For your reference, this is their first violation since ownership changed in August of 2006. And I believe we do have a representative here.
Okay. You can go ahead and come forward and just introduce yourself, please.
Dan Linkelpleck, I'm the owner of the 38 Roadhouse.
Madam Chair, he needs to use the mic.
That's a violation.
Yeah, if you could just speak into the mic, I apologize. Thank you.
Since the violation, I have taken the TAM course, and I've had meetings with my employees, and I told them that I would pay for them to take the course, and that I had to have them do and all have it done by August 1st. We tried to schedule a course at the bar, but through the COVID-19, it was almost impossible to try to get it scheduled.
So you offered it or required it, sir? I'm sorry, ma'am.
No, I told them they had to do it by August 1st.
And you're paying for it?
Yep, and I'm paying for it.
Okay, okay.
And we just had meetings, and I've let them know that, hey, it's a thousand-dollar fine to the bar, and that's a lot of money for a small little bar like that. Just let them know what, you know, how important it is that they start making sure they card everybody, so.
You have any bonus or anything like that for passing, like the last business did, so if they do pass?
I haven't thought about that, but, you know, I could, yeah, I could give them a bonus if they pass.
It's a lot cheaper than failing, yes.
That's a good idea.
Do you scan IDs, or?
Don't have a scanner.
You don't have a scanner? Okay, okay. What do you typically have, one bartender on duty at a time, or, okay, okay?
Typically, we only have one bartender on duty. This particular case, the gal walked in, and my bartender happened to be in the bathroom at the time, and she walked around the corner. I was there, I thought she knew the gal, because she worked at a different bar, and she looked at her, and said, hi, how are you? And just like that, just like she knew her forever. So I, otherwise, I was going to get up and card the girl, so. I was partly at fault there, too. It was the gal's second day, and.
Did she have a third day? Is she still working for you?
She's still working for me, yeah.
Commissioner Heiburger.
Do you have something on your, where they sell your alcohol at, that, you know, says that today is their 21st birthday? So it's a reminder for the employees so they don't have to sit there and figure it out, so, you know what I'm saying? If you don't have a scanner, is there something for your employees that when they?
The calendars.
So that they know which day they're legal? Thank you.
Yeah, there's three of them up there, so they can look at it right away. And I've gone through and shown them the difference of all their licenses and stuff like that. But, and I did tell them though, you know, last weekend, we had a meeting, I told them you got to get the TAM course is taken by the 1st of August, so. For one, if we ever have a violation again, it's not a $2,000 fine, though.
Commissioner Karski.
Dan, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, you've owned the bar for now fourteen years, first violation in fourteen years. I imagine that there's been other alcohol checks there, and I can guarantee that there will be in the future, so I, you know, one in fourteen years, I mean, it can happen, I get that, and I just hope that we don't see, have to see you back here again anytime soon. So make sure your employees understand the importance of how kind of embarrassing, humbling it is for you to get to stand up here and talk to us about this stuff, so, yes.
Commissioner Barry.
It's probably been ten years ago since I last stopped for a beer there, but it seems to me, I recall seeing the previous owner bartending. Is he still there?
No, he's not been, he hasn't been there probably since 2011.
Thank you. I guess additionally, I would say, you know, as a young man, it sometimes was up to me to try to get some beer. And as an old man, now it's my job to keep them from getting the beer. And so please, let's work together to make sure that this doesn't happen, and we don't. There just was a fatal accident in Lincoln County where alcohol is involved, and I know that stopping on my way back from Hartford at Roadhouse, I'm not having more than one, you know, at least if I'm driving. Anyway, those are my comments.
Dan, I'm wondering if, just for probably my edification and for the public, if you could explain this course that you've referred to a couple of times that you've taken and that your staff is taking, what is that course all about?
It's an alcohol training course. It's through the South Dakota Retailers Association.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, any other questions? All right, I'd entertain a motion. Oh, a public hearing. Wow, I'm having a hard time this morning. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak against this license?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments? Commissioner Benega.
I would just say, Dan, that since it's been since 2006, and you haven't had any violations, I will approve this, but I hope that we don't ever have to see you again on this particular topic. I also know that everybody needed to close when we were doing the curfews, and that was a concern from the Sheriff's Office. So we do appreciate the fact that that's been turned around, so again, I'll approve it this time, but we really need to keep people safe and happy, and frankly, you've got to be part of the solution, not part of the problem, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, I think the point here is that the commission takes this very seriously, and I think constituents in Minnehaha County require us all to take this very seriously, so.
I did close for a month, you know, from March 27th, and I didn't reopen up until April 24th because of the ten-person limit and everything. I lost over $7,000 in one month's time, and I, you know, I had to reopen, I couldn't keep losing any more money.
Right. Yeah, we recognize that was a significant hardship for you and many other small businesses.
Move approval.
I think we have a motion.
Nope, they're dead.
And in a second. No, we have a roll call vote now, unless anybody else has comments. Okay, roll call vote, Olivia.
Karski?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for being here this morning.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to item 12, which is a brief presentation on the Board of Mental Illness. Good morning. You hear about yourself this morning, Tom?
I am. Aaron is in hearings this morning, and so, Tom, we're high, co-chair of the Board of Mental Illness, along with Aaron Johnson. We are the joint co-chairs of the Minnehaha and Lincoln County Board of Mental Illness. We are obviously not Jim Osti, and Jim Osti would like to be probably the first one to tell you that it now takes two of us to do his job. What we've dealt with in the past year, I mean, has been, we've run into, being new at this, we've run into a lot of issues. The primary one was, within the first two weeks of us starting in this position, the tornado hit Avera Behavioral Health, and we've been here and spoke about that. Fortunately, Avera Behavioral Health and HSC worked together to get people placed. But when it comes to our budget, there were some additional costs last year we had to deal with, because we had, our QMHPs, our Qualified Mental Health Professionals, had to commute down to Yankton to evaluate people. Eventually, we got telehealth set up, and that was kind of a blessing in disguise, because obviously now, we've needed to use that here with the COVID-19 situation. However, there were some individuals, before we got that set up, they were making like one trip a week, or one or two trips a week down to Yankton to evaluate individuals. And Avera also worked with us to try and keep anybody who was on a hold up here in Minnehaha County in the limited space that Avera had at Behavioral Health. But again, a few still, when they had, when they were full or whatever, they had to move down to HSC, so we did have to deal with that. But again, it set us up for where we're at now as far as telehealth. We're doing that now with COVID-19 as well. We have an iPad on the unit, and then the QMHP meets with them, sits in a little room in Behavioral Health and evaluates that way through telehealth. We did have an issue here recently where a disgruntled patient punched the iPad. So now we are back to using Avera's iPads instead of one provided by the county. But fortunately, that's enough to get us by for right now. Doctors are back to doing inpatient visits, and so we're able to use that without too much of a logjam. There are some hurdles there that they have to deal with as well, though, but when a QMHP is evaluating somebody by telehealth, they can't see everything, obviously. They can't see if a mental health patient has maybe lacerations on their arm from a previous attempt, or they can't see if they're tapping their leg outside of the screen, or they're nervous, or that doesn't come off as well. But they're making do with what we're able to do here, so. They'd like to get back to doing in-person visits. Again, we'll work with that as the COVID-19 passes, as we kind of work our way out of this. The other, the other thing we're trying to do is use what's called the Volt System with Avera. It's their in-house text messaging rather than making phone calls. We're trying to save a couple of steps there. With COVID-19, we've had the opportunity to try and do more things electronically, which was probably overdue. We've filed all our documents by email with the clerk now, rather than going into the clerk's office and handing a stack of paper. So that saved us a little time, saved some paper. We are working with IT to kind of change the way our database works. That's how we track individuals now. We have a database set up, and that's how our offices and the auditors know what county the individual originally came from, before they end up in Minnehaha County and at the hospital or at Behavioral Health. And so we know, we can track who to bill. And so we're working at speeding that up, and maybe, maybe being able to directly, just to do more in general with that database. just to do more in general with that database. As far as our numbers, what we have seen is April, our, we typically have about 130 to 140 holds in any given month. And in April, we had about 100. And now, I, I, you know, I don't know how to speculate on what, what attributed to that, whether it was people being at home and having their support system in place that they didn't have that sort of a breakdown, or whether it was just there weren't the calls because, much like crime was down there for a short period of time, because people weren't out and about, the mental health holds were down. I don't know. But we were down, you know, 15% in April. Now, May, we saw that number go back up, and we're at that 130 level again. So we don't really know where it's headed from here, whether we're going to see more, maybe individuals we haven't seen before, just because of the uncertainty of the situation. But we're kind of tracking that and watching that going forward to kind of see where our numbers go. So just a couple of things that we're trying to get ahead of and pay attention to right now, just based upon what we've seen here in the last couple of months. With that, I'll go ahead and open it up to any questions that anybody might have.
Commissioner Benega.
Tom, has HSC been able to give you more help than they have in the past with inpatient and reviews in Yankton? Or have they, I mean, there was a limit for quite a while that was frankly really low, and have they been able to expand that?
Well, as far as how they're doing things right now, I, as far as bed numbers, I'm not exactly sure on, on what their numbers are. I do know that they have, they have opened up a unit for COVID patients specifically to isolate them from the rest of the, the general area. Just to, again, to be able to treat those, because we have seen more, I mean, the, the portion of mental health people who, who have COVID compared to the, the percentage of the general population is much, much higher than the general population.
I was gonna ask you about that. What kind of growth have you seen with COVID-19?
It's, it's been pretty consistent since it started. It's, it's been about 15% of the holds there for a while. Now it's a little less, just like in the general population. But for that first two-month period, it was about 15% of our holds were, had, had COVID. And I, and I don't know whether that's because they're maybe in, in a group setting, or, or maybe just don't have the, the mental capacity to understand what's all going on around them, certain individuals. That certainly could be, but it's, it is a, a higher amount, so.
Thank you.
Other questions? For Tom this morning?
All right, well, thank you for having me.
Yeah, thank you very much for being here. All right, that takes us to item 13, which is a presentation by the Minnehaha County Ambulance Medical Director, Jeff Luther. I understand, Jeff, you're online on the telephone, is that true?
That's true, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you great, yeah, thank you.
Oh, awesome, thank you. Well, the Dr. Jeff Luther, Medical Director, Quality Insurance Director for the Minnehaha County Rural Ambulance Association or Primary Service Areas. Let me begin, I'll try and be brief, but we have so much ground to cover. What I would like to do first, I think, is just talk about 2019. And what I did is I, I provided a report and then a supplemental, I apologize for that, but I wanted this graphic report supplied, because I think it's, it's interesting, easy to understand, and that's kind of a recap of the entire year. But what I would like to do is just briefly talk about that fourth quarter. And during that three-month period, I was able to pull 398 calls. Now, when I review these calls, these are from ImageTrend, which is the South Dakota Electronic Patient Care Record now that everyone is using, except for paramedics, now it's called PCEMS. They have a different format, but that's reviewed concomitantly with the city. So of all those cases, I was able to pull off of ImageTrend. And we did have some minor glitches with that, because that system was down just a bit, but we're able to capture, I think, all of the, the necessary information. What I did notice was a slight decrease from the third quarter, which I would attribute to that being seasonal. And again, as the caveat, that the calls that I pull do include mutual aid calls. So when I review the PCRs, some of those could be redundant or do, but I'm usually able to trend those out. And of course, we have to wait for the, the PCR to be filled out by the provider. But there's usual consistency now with this ImageTrend, so I think that what we're able to see is the QA process is much easier. Now, what also was underfoot throughout the whole 2019 was the development of a unified set of protocols that each service could use once we were able to get them completed and then promulgate out to the services. We did get that done, but it was just slightly after the first of the year. And then, once we got all of those approved, we were in process of setting up a governance meeting with the primary service areas. Jason was working very hard to get that done, and then the whole EMS world changed at the first part of that second quarter. But again, staying within the report for 2019 and in particular that fourth quarter, the QA process, I think we have that in the report. And those calls that are reviewed are those that, are the critical calls that we've talked about and back were in the ordinance at one point. Those include cardiac arrests, or major trauma, pediatric calls. And then I look at advanced airways, all of those that I can find, I review those. And then we do the random sampling of calls. Now, those types that I reviewed, including in that quarter, was five cardiac arrests, 10 major traumas, there was one listed as other, which was a, a complicated mental health call. 21 pediatric cases, and then the random review of 49 different types of, of cases or calls. All of them were accepted within the performance indicators that we picked. I did do follow-up on five other calls and found no remedial action needed. It was usually documented, but again, since airway is so critical, those will fall out sometimes. And if I pick up a trend, which I have not, then I will talk with the individual medical directors on those. We also, if you recall during that time, there's a, there was some modification in the ordinance to match the state with respect to who responds to EMS calls, and that is at least one EMT or higher and a driver. And so far, I'm, I'm happy to say that we have not seen any, any changes in the quality of that and that it seems to be working well. Is it the best? Probably not. But I think it matches the state in this to allow some of these services who are facing continuous problems with staffing and finding volunteers. For the report that I think is important, I also did dispatch information, as I have done before. And if we look at the 448 calls in the county, these are the 911 for that quarter, that was also down a bit from the quarter before. And again, I think that that was just mostly due to a seasonal change. And if we look at the total numbers, I've got a graph there that shows total EMS responses. We'll see MedStar had 187. And those calls, 118 of them were in the city of Brandon. Del Rapids had 108. Garrity and 55, Humboldt 61. And PC, now it's called PCEMS, had 37 in their primary ser, service area. I had none for Jasper in that quarter. And if we look at the most common responses, and I, and I'm sorry if, if my report is not following the slide that I'm seeing, what I'm seeing is the year total. I graphed, I'm up on the first part of the report. And, um, let's... Okay, that, I covered that, and then, now, here we go, the most common responses. And we can see that the majority of our responses are transfers. That holds true, through falls are very common. Sick person is kind of a catch-all, and it is placed in this category based on certain symptoms sets that the caller may have. And it's actually very common, and we usually sort those out once we're on scene. Injury accidents, 38. Unconscious individuals, 25. And then breathing problems, 25. And when I said earlier, we have a lot of ground to cover, and when the second quarter, in the first, beginning of second quarter of '20, we've seen EMS change. And a lot of this is, is related to respiratory issues in the COVID pandemic. Those were kind of on the horizon and expected changes that we were going to trend out, and we continue to trend those, but I'll try and get into that a, a little later without taking up too much of the commission's time. But continuing the report, next we look at response times. And again, if you recall, our ordinance requires the, the services to respond, acknowledge within 60 seconds, and in 10 minutes to respond in terms of, to the station and getting en route. That's often referred to as out-of-shoot time, and the fourth quarter was pretty close to the third quarter. And if we look at the providers, they all met that expectation. And this bar graph will review that. If we look at our averages and then the 90 percentile, they're all in compliance with that. If we look at the en route, en route to scene, that, that reflects the total time for the ambulance from the moment that the wheels start until it arrives on scene. We have to consider also during this quarter many different other factors, including weather. And then also these areas, some of them are quite vast geographically. And so when they respond to the, to the, for the fringes of these areas, obviously it just takes more time to get them. But overall, I think that we're doing very well. Garrity and has a, has a, has a good response time. They, they have Palisade Manor in the city limits, so I think that that helps. And then if we move on to the next slide, that's the en route to on-scene. Again, with this one, this, this covers that entire time. There we go. And again, that, that's, I, I think, great, it's pretty impressive. And then we also have in this a combination, and that would be the, the next time. That's the total response time on the next slide there, that's dispatch to scene. And again, this is from the second that they acknowledge that the 911 dispatches the service. They acknowledge they're en route, and this is, they're en route to on-scene. Again, I think those are, these are all great numbers if we're looking at response numbers. Again, response times is a bit of an enigma, and because there's so many variables that are involved in responses, again, some ostensibly out of the control of the service, down roads, address, inconsistencies, irregularities, those sorts of things. Now, the next slide I show, again, this is just to give the commission an idea of just what happens and how long things take to get a call, respond, treat the patient, transport the patient, clean the ambulance, and then get back into service. And I think this is a good metric, considering, and that, I'm sorry, we need to move up to total call duration, I apologize. I'm trying to move this on my screen here. Okay, next slide.
I think you need to go the other direction, yeah. One more.
There we go. That, that's it, total call duration there. Just to give you a perspective on just what it takes. Now, you know, these, th, th, these are good times, and considering there's, there's trauma in there, and often trauma can involve explication, lots of variables in there. But turning around time to get these ambulances back into these small communities is, is pretty impressive. And I think that that's a testimony to the commitment and training and, and the collaboration. I'll move in now, next to the, our EMS system data. And thi, this is something that we've looked at, and then there is a response mode. And if we look at, once the service is dispatched, we look at an immediate response. So we're looking at about 75% of those. Non-emergent's about 25%. Now, there's also, and I'll get into that a little bit later, we have other agencies that may be on scene first, particularly our Minnehaha County Sheriff's deputies. And they can either downgrade or they can upgrade, depending on what they see first on scene. And it's a small percentage, but it's an important percentage. You can see where we've downgraded to non-emergent and/or a non-emergent upgraded to emergent. And we'll, we'll scroll up.
No, other way, I think.
Other way?
For us, up is down.
And transport mode, we'll, we'll talk a bit about that. Those that are, once the patient is triaged and treated, then we want to transport. Now, sometimes we don't know how they're transported. Is that with lights and siren, or do they just drive? Is this a transport, et cetera? But if we look at the emergent, we do know, we're able to trend 37% of these calls where they're, they respond from the scene to the destination or the hospital emergently, 37.5%. Non-emergent is 32.98%. The reason that this is important, in my opinion, is that if we're dispatched emergent based on the call taker and the information we have, we're able to get on scene and provide pre-hospital care. And if we transport that person from an emergent call, non-emergently, to the hospital, in my opinion, we've done our job. We've already, they're in process of delivering a patient in an already improved condition to the destination. So I look at those relatively close. Not always is it useful information, but on certain call types, it is. And then if we look at the disposition of those calls, we see that we've got about a 69.9% treated and transported. That's pretty consistent. We see patients refusing care at about 15%. Then there's a list of these that I don't think I need to necessarily go into, because the, the PR, the PRS, Patient Refused Services, is a, is, that's a second one. That is an important metric that we look at, because it involves all sorts of things. And we do have some that we treat, and then they are released against medical advice. And then we also have some that are treated and then released to family members, such as adolescents and those sorts of things. As we scroll down again, I want to talk about the Minnehaha County Deputy EMT Program. This is a vital segment of our EMS community. They have been very instrumental in assisting us, and as, not only as an adjunct, but now kind of as a primary resource. They have added more EMT basics, and we've got AEDs as well as other airway management available to actually all deputies. And in the quarter for 2019, I reviewed 36 county deputy EMS responses. That number's going up, and they've been involved in all manner of, of call types, including our critical ones, strokes, seizures, cardiac arrest. And at, I know in the fourth quarter of '19, a deputy helped deliver a baby. And so they've had great input, and it's led to some of the success and taking off some of the burden in our EMS system. I do have a graphic there, that's the total response time, again, dispatched to on-scene. And in this slide, I've added the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office. You can see the times are pretty impressive. But also, we have to realize that, you know, the rubber's on the road with these, this service, and that... and that is, is real important. Uh, they're able to provide not only pre-hospital care for us, but they're also able to size up the scene, make the scene safe. Um, because scene safety is, is, is absolutely paramount, uh, particularly in some of these traumas. So, very impressive, uh, I think. I think the, the commission should be, um, uh, quite pleased with this. Um, and then I, I'll, I'll try and finalize a bit here with the update on the progress of our projects that has started and ended in two thousand nineteen, carried over into twenty-twenty. Um, and that is most likely, um, going to impact EMS a- a- across our whole region. But we completed our protocols, our unified protocols. We're able to, um, uh, we were able to get together a couple of governance meetings and I've got consensus from the providers. Uh, Jason got it together, I think it was last Thursday. Um, everyone is on board with, uh, implementing these. We'd have liked to have done that, um, earlier in the year, uh, but the pandemic hit and that impacted again, uh, just about every facet of EMS. So with respect to the first quarter and the second quarter, I think the commission will, I, I'd like to provide a separate report. Um, and I'd like to wait just a bit because how all of this has changed. We're still gathering data, um, in terms of the, the pandemic and how it has impacted our EMS community. And I think the mental health presenter had talked about, um, that just previously. But there is some very interesting, um, statistics and, and trend patterns that we really don't know. Um, if we look at the ED visits across the country in the last sixty-plus days, uh, emergency room visits are down forty-one percent. And there has been some stuff out on the blogs and the resources that I use, which is, uh, um, it's a community of, uh, uh, EMS medical directors. And, uh, we provide input almost daily. But there was a, uh, a concept of what's going on, where are our heart attacks, where are our strokes and some of these critical calls? And we started to look at this, we're, we're just assuming it's, it's, um, people in shelter, they're afraid and maybe afraid to the point where they ignore cyst symptoms and just don't call nine-one-one. What's interesting too, there's been a spike in DOA calls, um, whether that's related or not, but, uh, it's a little bit concerning. And we're, we're just now delving into this and getting more and more information. After this hit, again, late first quarter, beginning of the second quarter of twenty, we were, we were empowered to change lots of things, including how we dispatch. And so our dispatching questions changed, um, to include flu-like symptoms, cough. Um, first started pretty broad and as the pandemic increased in positive calls, other changes were made. We're getting information daily from the, uh, EOC and we would meet, um, via phone daily with representatives from police, fire, um, ambulance and then hospital representation. And we would get our information from the hospitals as well as the EOC and we would make some of our decisions based on all of that input. The collaboration to me has been very impressive. Uh, what I do is just a small piece of this, but the professionalism and the, um, again, the collaborative efforts of all of those that are in this community i- is outstanding. Whether it's resource, um, uh, sharing or, um, uh, such as the PPEs, uh, to us sharing our information on how to respond, uh, changing the dispatching, again, we have, um, tools that we use, emergency tools that help us guide the type of call for, in terms of precautions. To now, it's, if there is a call that is at risk, um, that's been identified and the proper precautions are taken. In the city, there's a, a scout system, uh, where a lot of the times the patient is met at the door, assessed, and then with the remainder of the resources waiting outside, they make the decision on what to bring in to treat the, the patient. Um, I think also looking at where we're headed, uh, this will impact, um, lots of our, our responses going forward. Um, our after-action plan at this point is, we're thinking it's going to take us weeks or months to go through, but, um, it's been a, a great learning process. But once I, I complete the, the information that, that we're looking at, there appears to be a trending down in the calls. Uh, however, with the recent protests and the gatherings, uh, we're waiting cautiously to see if there's going to be a spike again in the, um, uh, the call types. Uh, I also have information I can share with the commission. I would like to do that maybe July whereby we trend respiratory type calls and we, we compare those to last year. And it's, it's pretty impressive what we see. And a- also, everything else that is EMS is still ongoing. You know, we have the flu, um, you know, with people being confined, now they're starting to come out. Uh, we'll see increases in everything from bug bites to trauma. But it's, I, I've been doing this since, uh, about nineteen ninety-nine and I've never seen anything like this. I've, you know, we've been through lots of things together, uh, SARS, Ebola, uh, lots of those things. And I guess it just, it, it's, it's very impressive at, um, what we're facing and oftentimes very taxed services. And hopefully that we can all come out ahead on this. So I, I tried to be brief, there's still a lot of information I think that the commission would be interested in seeing. Overall, I, I think, um, we've, we've got great response. Um, we've got lots of, um, resources out there. Again, the collaboration has been pretty impressive, um, and, you know, we tried not to leave anybody out there standing by themselves, but, um, sometimes getting information out there, um, where it needs to be, um, takes a bit of time. So having said all of that, I'll open up any questions that the commission may have for me and I'll do my best.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Heiburger.
I just have a comment. Um, thank you, thank you, Dr. Luther, for a really thorough report. And I have looked through the whole report that was sent to the commission over our Dropbox this weekend. And I just want to tell any, anybody out there that's listening, if you would like to see that report, it's usually filed with the auditor's office. Am I correct, Carol? I'm looking at Olivia, yes. So this complete report, if you wanted to see more information, is on file at the auditor's office and you could get it there.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Well, you've certainly given us a lot to think about. We, um, it's good news to hear that you, um, have been meeting just recently even about these unified protocols and we'll look forward to hearing more about that and, um, as well as some of the other information that you alluded to. But, uh, I think we've made great progress as a commission where we didn't even used to get reports and now, um, you provide us these detailed reports and we appreciate very much all the work that you do for us. So, um, with that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. Be safe.
Yeah, you as well. Okay, so that takes us to item fourteen, which is authorize the chair to sign an agreement with Lincoln County for building inspector services. Scott Anderson, good morning.
Thank you. Um, Scott Anderson, planning director. And, um, this is a, an agreement that I've been, um, working on for a little while. Uh, it is, uh, an agreement with a proposed agreement that we would enter into, uh, a contract services with Lincoln County on an as-needed basis, and I really need to stress that because, uh, this would be sort of a stopgap coverage. It should, uh, we need to do inspections, particularly framing and final inspections. Um, if the, if our own building inspector was out for an extended period of time, for example, on sick leave or maybe wanted to take like a two-week, uh, vacation. So, um, and in the memo that I prepared for you, I, uh, as the, I will go out and I am able to do septic inspections. And he has sort of trained me and show, and has shown me how to do footings inspections. So basically, those are pretty easy. Make sure there's no roots in the, in the trench, the, the footings are so wide, so deep, we look for water. I mean, and he has a nice checklist for me. That's something that's relatively easy to, uh, uh, an inspection that's easy to conduct. But when you get into framing, there is a lot of detail when it comes to headers and steps and windows and, and, um, load-bearing requirements that it's beyond what I feel the county should and myself should tackle, um, for liability and other reasons. And then additionally, um, final inspections, those are something that we can sort of manipulate, aren't always needed immediately. But, um, so that's how, that's how I perceive that we would handle these in the future. That if for some reason I needed, uh, a final or a framing inspection and our own sep- our building, chief building official was not available, we could call upon Lincoln County to go down or to come up here and do the inspection for us. Uh, they, in the memo, I also indicated that they, the Lincoln County already provides building services on a contract-type basis for the city of Harrisburg. So this is something that they have done. I've worked with Toby Brown, the planning director, he's willing to, you know, do this if, if we need. But, uh, we did, we do need to get the, the, um, the basis laid for this in case it happens because it does take a while to get the contract written, get it reviewed by the state's attorney, get both commissions to sign it. So this is sort of a, a preemptive, um, piece of legislation that I hope we can get adopted. Uh, if you choose to approve it today, um, I have worked with Toby Brown and he's, um, I'll send this down to him and then he will run it through Lincoln County's commission. And, um, I think, I think it's for, I can't remember how many years it's for. Anyway, it's for a period of time, um, uh, I can't recall, I think it's two years?
Twenty-four months.
Yeah, thanks, twenty-four months. I knew we had set a time period on there. So if we approve this, we, it will give us a couple of years to sort of see how it works out, if we use it at all. And then maybe bring it back to you as well. So I'd be glad to answer, answer any questions you have.
Questions for Scott? I think this is the kind of collaboration that we are always trying to look for opportunities to work with other governmental entities. This seems like a perfect solution to a problem, so thank you for bringing it forward.
Make a motion to allow you to sign this contract, Madam Chair.
Second. Motion and a second. Any other comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. All right, that takes us to item fifteen, which is to authorize the chair to sign a land purchase agreement to acquire right-of-way for culvert replacements for project number twenty-dash-zero-one. DJ Boothey, I see you on Zoom. Good morning.
Questioners? DJ Boothey, Highway Superintendent. Uh, this item that we have today is for the purchase of a section of right-of-way. Uh, this is on our culvert project. This project doesn't necessarily require extra right-of-way in a, in and of itself. However, in conversations with the landowners adjacent to the, uh, to the culverts that are being replaced, we asked them, uh, if they would be willing to sell, uh, the right-of-way in order for us to get that total one hundred feet or fifty feet on each side of the section line, uh, where we don't already have that. On the right-hand, or the top-right graphic there that shows the star that's on the screen right now, uh, that's the culvert that we're looking at with this parcel. Uh, this is about three and a half miles south of Garrington on County Highway one oh-five, just north of County Highway one thirty. And, uh, this is from the Blies, it's a ten-foot wide strip of right-of-way, about two feet, two thousand feet long. So, uh, requesting, uh, your approval to purchase this right-of-way and, and, uh, set us up for our reconstruction project that will have sometime in the future. Uh, but in the short term, we're just replacing this culvert. And I can stand by for any questions.
Questions for DJ?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, DJ.
Thank you.
Have a good day. All right, that takes us to item sixteen, uh, which is authorize the chair to sign the Sioux Empire Triage Center Joint Part- Joint Participation Agreement and Funding Commitment Letter. And it seems like Carrie and Aaron should have brought fireworks and Betty with them, so.
Good morning, Commissioner, Carrie Benz, Human Services Department. Um, before you today is our joint agreement, our partnership agreement for the Community Triage Center. Obviously, you're well aware that the Triage Center has been at the forefront of a number of our leadership, um, in the community. So namely, the county, the city, Avira Hospital, as well as Sanford. And so, um, together in December of two thousand nineteen, they actually, uh, formed a nonprofit known as the Sioux Empire Triage Center. And that was incorporated on December tenth of two thousand nineteen. And the board has moved forward in developing, um, the purpose and developing our, um, project in providing a mid-level care alternative for the nonviolent persons that are drug and alcohol, um, with drug and alcohol addictions and mental health care issues. And so with this joint participation agreement, um, it really binds all four partners to assure that for the next three years that we're committed to that project. Each year, each, um, participant, um, or partner is willing to, they identify how much they're willing to contribute to that project. So for the next three years, um, if you've read through the agreement, it identifies that for the county, it would be an initial and one-time hundred thousand dollars that would go toward, uh, the build-out of the project, which is going to be located at the corner of Eighth and Dakota. That's the targeted location. Um, and then for the next three years thereafter, it would be four hundred thousand a year. Noting that that money is, is already being invested in our budget, in the county budget for, to operate the detox center that's currently located in the jail. Obviously, one of the biggest pieces of locating the Triage Center outside of the jail walls is obviously it becomes much more accessible and consumer-friendly as well. Receiving treatment and care should never be or felt like it is a punishment. And so, uh, by signing this agreement today, um, it identifies that the county is committed and will be a partner in this project for the next few years. Um, obviously, Commissioner Karski is a part of that, he's the vice-chair of that board. And I also have Erin Serska here, who's been pivotal in getting the budget put together, um, and as well as this agreement. And Alicia Kolor is here with the city. Um, she'll be taking the same, um, information before the city council. So if you have questions, we're here to answer those.
Questions? Nobody wants to do like a
Just, yeah.
Big celebration up here?
Just, it's a monumental day. It's been, you know, many, many years in coming and thank you, Carrie, for all your hard work in the beginning and you did a trip out west to look at the first Triage Center ideas and it's just ballooned from there. And it definitely has taken a lot of time and Erin and, and all the other people that have worked so hard on this and grant dollars and, and it's just been definitely a collaborative effort that started with the county and then, um, moved into the city and, and has just been a really, a really good, it's very exciting to see it found the opening.
It is, you're right. Thank you. Commissioner Karski.
Well, yes, it should be fireworks and whatever. For me, it's almost anticlimactic just after the number and amount of time and everything. It's like, oh, we're finally here. Um, because it took a lot of work to get here. A lot of work to get here and, you know, you're bringing together Sanford, Avira and, and the, um, presidents of those, um, organizations and the mayor and myself and the staff and sheriffs, plural, and police chiefs. And I mean, just the number of people to get all this and everybody on board, um, has been a lot of work. And, um, yeah, it's been, it's been an honor to be a part of it, quite honestly. So appreciate your support on this. Um, we've timed our, the county's contributions to kind of match our cash flow with, um, collections, revenues, that type of thing. So, um, any questions? Probably the least qualified to answer them, but Carrie and Erin are here, so, um, we'll give it our best shot.
I think you failed to call out the attorneys involved. There's a lot of, you know, you try to put these number of people together.
We did recruit one attorney, um, Miles Schumacher, who I'm sure he's still wondering, how did I ever accept this, um, agree to do this? And he, he has been, um, yeah, just the work that he's done, working with, um, civil attorneys from the city, the county and, um, attorneys from the healthcare organizations and getting everybody to agree where the i's should be dotted and where the commas should be has been a lot of work.
Yeah, for sure. All right, Commissioner Barth.
I tell you, from the outside of it, uh, it's not always been clear how things were going. I'm very happy to have this come forward today. And let me say that with an investment of this large, this project needs to work.
All right. Anything else? All right. Anything else? Now they'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all for all of your work. All right. Um so that takes us to item seventeen, liaison reports. Other liaison reports. Commissioner Heiburger?
Um just report out on the library that the bookmobile is back on the road again. I think probably a little bit limited, but they are back on the road. They also started bin deliveries to the daycare centers again. Um they have been doing curbside pickup, which people who use the library are well aware of. But in May, they checked out nearly sixteen thousand items during curbside. So that is in itself a huge job. I can't even imagine how difficult that was scheduling that. But they did succeed. And now they are starting with their new program, which is a grab and go. There is scheduled online on the library's um website and the city website can get you connected there. Or just go look for Sioux Land Libraries um so that you can start picking out. And that is starting in Sioux Falls, but it will be extending to rural county libraries soon. So if you want to see that schedule, just check it out. And then Dean and I met with the public defender's office this morning, just went through budgets and some other um issues. I don't know if Dean has anything to add to that or not, but.
Yeah, if you don't mind. Um yeah, the Commissioner Heiburger, myself and the rest of the Public Defender's Advisory Board, John Heinrich Sidestrange and Ryan White, met with um Tracy Smith and several of her staff. And as has been said, they're, they're budgetarily, they're on track. We looked at this year's budget, next year's budget. We looked at the staff. Um they are adding two new attorneys starting in August. They've looked at their internship programs. I, I personally am um happy and pleased with the direction that things are going. We did ask Tracy to not only put together a five-year plan based on what she's looking for personnel-wise, but what are you going to do with those people? And um basically strategically planning for how that office will be run going forward. So um I thought it was a good meeting and um went well.
All right, just kind of, I'm going to just piggyback on the comments about budgets. Not exactly liaison, but um it's a responsibility we all have. We have budget hearings starting next Monday. Um just for commissioners to be aware, we've got two kind of tough days on Monday and Tuesday. We've got a full day of budget on Monday. And then Tuesday, we'll reconvene in the budget hearings after um the commission meeting on Tuesday morning. Uh but I know that the staff has done a lot of work on budgets. They've been um very, um I've been appreciative of their taking seriously the need to keep our budgets really conservative for next year. And so it will be a good couple of days, but I'm hopeful we can make a lot of progress after uh those couple of days. So Commissioner Barth?
So I have a couple. Uh the museum had a, board had a meeting last week, and uh we did it by Zoom from their new Irene Hall uh facility, and it worked really great. I think there were three, three people present uh in the, in the room, and the rest of us were in Zoom, so to speak. And a great facility that they have out there. Um I know that uh working on the election was a stretch for, for uh the director over there, but his staff, I think, uh worked hard to support the auditor's office. And uh they feel that, you know, they did it for the team. So secondarily, uh I had a meeting yesterday with the Minnehaw County Conservation District, which by the way, has a couple of board members to be elected this fall. And they are willing to take your application should you wish to be elected. You need twenty-five signatures and probably at least some friends. In any case, um they are looking at a grant to improve the trail in the Givenc property out there at Wall Lake. And uh in, in applying for the grant with the GF and P, uh they, uh the GF and P wants it to be concrete because asphalt gets too bumpy, it breaks up, and it, it needs to be accessible to people in wheelchairs also. So they're working on that. And they also have um uh just as a side, they um, they've planted thirty-five acres of trees this year.
All right. Commissioner Heiburger?
Sorry, I have one more comment. Um we had an SDACC call yesterday, South Dakota Association of County Commissioners. Um just to let us know that the association continues to work with the state on what COVID funding would be passed down to the counties. And so that is still a work in progress. And also, we talked about our convention, which is scheduled for September. I will remind you all that it is in Sioux Falls. And you got a email from the association this last week asking your possible intent to come. I would beg you to please respond to that. Um in the affirmative, of course, but um so we can get some ideas of, um there's still a few people that are concerned that we shouldn't have it at all. But I think the over, the overarching so far has been, we need to move forward with the convention and we'll figure it out since September, so.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
I'd like to ask President Heiburger a couple of questions here. She is president of the association. Um Cindy, I uh responded already, and they asked for suggestions on little programs and stuff. Does, are you getting those?
Yes.
And do they know that these great ideas were mine?
No, they do not. They did not know it was a monkey, a monkey poll. I can remember. Anyway, it was a monkey poll. And so they do not know who sent the responses, but yes, they are.
They did get the ideas.
So far, the responses have been eighty-five percent and greater. That would like to see the convention go forward. So um but I'd like to continue, continue to encourage people to respond to that poll, so.
All right. Anything else? Commissioner Bennega?
Uh just real quickly, uh I've met a couple of times and Cindy's participated all, also with um the mayor's office and with our management group at the Sioux Empire Fair Board to discuss uh the potentials, possibilities of the Sioux Empire Fair. And uh that is being worked on as we speak. And uh the management board will come back with some positive suggestions at some point in the near future.
Okay, Commissioner Karski?
Regarding the fair, I was asked just yesterday, are, are all the concerts still going on as intended? Or do we have vendors and ride providers? I mean?
It's a work in progress because some of the vendors, obviously, have rerouted their schedules uh and aren't able to participate. Others have filled in or asked to fill in. So, and some of the concerts themselves are not traveling currently. So right now, I would say it's uh, as I mentioned, a work in progress with no definitive um process that's going to outline every day for every event. It is a monumental task, to be honest. And uh we'll, we'll keep you updated as we know the answers.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Well, I had one thing to that. Just I text, was texting with Scott yesterday because I'd gotten some questions from other counties. And at that, yesterday, they did have a carnival lined up and with a second possibility if the first one fell through for some reason. So the carnival part's been, been lined up. And so they're still moving forward.
Four H isn't involved, though, are they?
Four H is, is going to be having their achievement days at a different time period in August. I don't remember right off the top of my head those dates.
I will just add to that is a, Four H is a operating division, if you will, of the state. And the state has pretty much tied that one down to no events at the Sioux Empire Fair at this point.
All right. A lot going on, as there has been for the last three months, even though we've, um COVID made it seem like there's less going on. I think everybody was working twice as hard trying to figure out what the next move was. So um so if there are no other liaison reports, I'll go to new business. Is there any new business? Commissioner Barth?
Earlier, I mentioned this one uh legal bill to an outside attorney for twenty-one thousand plus dollars. And that was on a habeas case uh in a very serious crime.
Thank you. All right. If there's no more new business, um we have old business. And the auditor was kind enough to join us today uh to talk, give us a little bit of update on his perspective on the primary election.
Good morning, Commissioner Bob Litz from the auditor's office. And uh, uh you know, at the canvas yesterday, we went over some things and uh I think everybody kind of held back for today. I appreciate being able to be up here. Uh and uh, you know, a lot of the things were covered pretty well, uh you know, by the press and media, uh what have you. And uh so I'm, I'm not sure uh exactly what you'd care for me to go over. So I thought uh maybe uh, you know, if you had questions that I could address that would lead into what uh, you know, the heart of the topic of what you want. And I, I would assume that if one of you has got a question, a couple of others of you are willing to, are, are wondering about that as well. Uh you know, I would tell you this, though. The development in the last couple of days is that uh the county has a legislative district recount between uh Mike Clark and Bethany Soy out in Legislative District Nine, which is out Hartford Way. Uh there was eight ballots that separated those two. And then the city does their canvas tonight. And after that, then I think they will be taking the petitions between the Staley and the Jensen race. And I bring that up because Tom Greco and myself will be working together, uh you know, for the ballot tabulation and uh, and programming the machines and whatever else we have to do to make these two recounts successful. Um you know, while I'm standing here too, I, I also, I wanted to give credit, uh you know, a lot of this focus comes on me, but you know, the good work has, has been done by a lot of different people. And uh, you know, Tom Greco, when we put these elections together, we co-joined him, uh has just been marvelous to work with. He's, he's an awesome person. Uh the only thing I can pick on him about is, is that he's Army instead of Navy. But you know, I can, I can forego that. Heather Irwin in my office down there did some outstanding hours and, and recruited a staff. And uh we had a staff in that office for six weeks that worked late at night till nine-thirty or ten at night. And then every, every weekend, uh we worked there too, uh some hours in the weekend. We got kicked out uh the, the day of the demonstration. Everybody was kind of miffed about that. We had to leave the building about two-thirty. Uh you know, we lost a little bit on Memorial Day weekend. The Memorial Day, we took off. Uh but outside of that, there was somebody in that office every day, uh you know, this year. We still undershot uh the amount of ballots that came in on that. Uh I would also tell you that normally, uh if the COVID wasn't here, we have a worker that, that starts on the absentees. She's well organized. Uh and she does a lot of the absentee work, especially like in the general election. We go out to the nursing homes if you've got five people who want to come forward. Uh so looking forward, I'm in, I've got a couple of candidates in mind to take her position. She, she, she was compromised and did not do the absentee this year, so it fell on, on the rest of us. Uh but I've got a couple of candidates. They don't know they're candidates, and I'm going to interview them and, and see what happens. So uh but I, you know, the people that came forward for this election and the absentee, they, I, I, I tell you, I just can't express enough gratitude for them. I was amazed by them. Uh you know, and I was having trouble, honestly. Uh we didn't, we didn't get our last precinct location fulfilled until a week before the election. And you know, filling people in uh for those positions, uh it was, it was, it was difficult. I went through a lot of people. A lot of people backed out in the last two weeks. Uh you know, I, I even had Commissioner Barth who uh, you know, stepped up and, and went out to uh Mabelton Township. And you know, I, I also had three legislators out there working that were not on the ballot. And people say, well, isn't that a conflict of interest? No, not if they're on the ballot. And I find value in that because you got elected people actually looking at what's going on in those election places and elected officials coming down uh to see what's going on. I find value in that. Maybe some people don't like that, but uh I'll do it again unless somebody tells me not to. Uh so uh also, you know, on the absentee ballots, um the curious thing was, is that uh the, the, the number of ballots that we had requested and that we sent out was forty thousand three hundred and forty-three. The number of them that we had returned was thirty thousand two hundred and thirty-four. So we had over twenty percent or twenty-five percent of those ballots we mailed out to somebody. They never brought them back. Um I would also, I, I presented you folks with a graph today, uh kind of showing the patterns of how the absentee balloting worked this time. Uh and uh, you know, we, we felt that we were handling that situation and could probably handle it uh up until about two weeks before that. And then we started realizing that we were going to fall behind. And then the last, uh you can see the day before the election on that graph. And I apologize for the squiggly numbers on there. It's not ten thousand. You guys had my favorite techie up here when I was trying to stretch that out and shrink it. So those numbers, you know, but you can, you can figure out, uh you know, the ballot numbers that were on there. But anyway, we, we, I went over to the election center the day before the election. I had to get in there. And I couldn't get in the door because the ballot slot, people had dumped so many absentee ballots in there, I couldn't, I, it just wouldn't open. So we had to go in another way. Uh you know, it was a, it was, it was, it was a, it was a experimental type of an election. It was, uh, it was very gratifying in a lot of ways to see all those parts come together and do, uh Tom and I doing what we had to do to make it work. Uh you know, certainly, there's always room for improvement in every election. Uh there is no such thing as a perfect election. Now, and I'm not trying to dodge responsibility here, uh but uh you know, to have something uh of this, of this magnitude, and I, I think we did a lot of things right, and a lot of people out there did a lot of things right. And I wanted to give them credit for it. Not me, but them, because they showed up, you know. I just, I just asked them to. So with those, uh, with those statements, I, I would like to open it up for questions because I think that uh, Gerald, or, excuse me, I'm not the chair.
Mr. Bennega?
Bob, I'm sure you've had the same question as most of us have had. But can you uh restate and tell us what the legal qualifications and restrictions are for when you can start counting absentee ballots? Uh I think that needs to be clarified in some detail.
Um you know, maybe if we back up into, you know, forty-five days before the election. I get the ballots in about forty-eight days. And then we've got these requests that are in the queue right now. Let's use the general election, okay? Because if you checked all on your ballot request, we've got you in a queue. So forty-five days before the next election, we will get those ballots, we'll stuff them in the envelope the day before. And we've got a big mail drop on that day. And from that day on, if the ballot requests come in, or they want to do the walk-in absentee, those, those ballots, you know, they, they get sent out. And, and if we get it back in the mail, wa- walk-in, walk-in absentee is a lot easier because we, we just got it right there. Um the process, if you send in a request for the absentee ballots for the general election is, what we're going to do is go back and check your signature. There with you, either with your voter registration or something you've got in the past, we've got it scanned in down there. So we check that out. Uh and then if, uh we also check your ID. You have to send a picture of your ID. This year, we had a kind of a neat deal where you could, you could send the picture in uh instead of uh, you know, having to photocopy it. Uh now, we had a special place that you could send it in. It was electionsatminnehawhacounty.org, which a lot of people appreciated and liked. So then we've got to get that, match those two up, your, your ID and, and your, your application. Now, if you mailed them in because you made a copy of it, fine. Uh then we, we have to check them out. Uh and, and you know, that uh, so we send you out a ballot with a return envelope. And uh those get dropped in the mail. And that, that has to do with that forty thousand three hundred and forty-three ballots. That's how many we dropped in the mail over this period of time. Uh so after we drop those in the mail, they go to the voter. The voter presumably fills them out and, and sends them back in. And that was the patterns, you could see the patterns for the return on those ballots in that graph that I gave you. Uh and once the ballots come back in, uh then what we have to do is, is take and sort them out to a precinct. And then we put them in alphabetical order in the precinct. Well, these ballots come in from all different precincts, all different times, so it's one at a time. We don't have a box of uh, you know, Legislative District Nine ballots. They're all mixed up, and we have to sort them out. And, and so that, that is the process that killed us, that in, in, in checking the signatures. Uh Sue Roust and I had a bit of a conversation. She's saying that the signatures don't have to be checked by the auditor's office anymore. Um it makes me a little bit nervous, but you know, because somebody could challenge us in court, and then we got to go back and do them. Uh it'd be kind of a recount of sorts if, if some of them don't match up. You know, the signature thing too, it, 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 it's a good way of, of doing it because my signature is the same as it was in nineteen ninety when I filled out my first voter registration after I came back to California. I hoped it would become more eloquent, elegant, but it hasn't. It's the same. And so we can do that. But there are people um that have medical conditions out there. They develop in between these elections, and it's hard to see uh, you know, their, their, their signature. So it's not a perfect check. Um and, and I think that uh, you know, it's kind of a judgment call. And I, I'm very, I, I don't like looking at those signatures and go, man, you know. And then we've clearly had some where the wife has signed for the husband when they return the absentee ballots because they weren't signed. And we asked them, and she said, no, goes out the car and signs them up. So what do you do with that? I mean, technically, that's, that's uh not allowed as a ballot. But uh, so we, we, we go through all these checks. Uh we alphabetize them, and then we get them ready to go over across the street. And then what happens there is they're segregated into precincts. And, and, and we have tables of four. There's Democrat, Republican, Democrat, Republican, or we can sprinkle in Independent anywhere we want. And we, we have a very prescriptive process that we use for opening up those envelopes, putting that stamp on that ballot, and, and trying to keep anybody from looking at it. Although after ten thousand ballots, you probably don't care who voted what. Because I mean, the, the envelope's there, the signature's upside down, we slice the ballot, dump it out. Next person grabs it. I mean, there's a fleeting chance if somebody was really good, uh had, had this photographic memory, that they could remember somebody, but they're probably out in Vegas instead of here looking at elections. So um but that's kind of the, the process. And after they open that ballot up and put them in a stack, then they get brought into the count room, and then we count them. And uh, uh it just so happened that these ballots, as we were doing these, we just didn't get organized in time. We've had some. We've had some that were organized into the precincts, but not all of them. They kept coming in in little smatterings. Normally, I would process the absentees first, but we had kind of a significant pile of absentees from the work that we had been doing for the forty-five days before the election. But the absentee ballots that came in, we would get two or three of them, and it just didn't make any sense that, for me, to run the absentees at that time because we'd be running two or three ballots, loading them to a stick. The ballot, ballot management was, was doing something like that would have just been crazy. So we let the, let those go. We, we ran the election day ballots first during that election. And then as the ballots, the absentee ballots, the precinct pile started piling up, we were able to run those absentee precinct ballots through the tabulators, merge them with the numbers of the poll day, the polling day ballots, and, and that was where we got our totals from. And it was a two-day process, you know, about midnight, one o'clock, we just weren't, didn't have that many ballots left to process. They were the absentees, and that was where we could process ten, three, two, and load them to a stick. We could have stayed there all night doing that. The paper reported that people had been up twelve hours. That was not true. They'd been up eighteen and nineteen hours at that point. I made the call. I called the Secretary of State and says, you know, we're, we're just not going to be any different staying here all night, and then tomorrow, when the real work starts happening, everybody's going to be bushed and it's not going to be good. And he says, he said that it was my call. So I made a call. I've never done that before. But I made a call based on how I perceived my employees and people that were working the election. It was a health matter, you know? I mean, every, I, I would tell you this, too. I've not said this, but the last three times that I've worked on an election, I became dehydrated, my AFib kicked in, and I had to go to the doctor. One time, they kept me and put me on stuff, and that, that was the way it goes. I mean, it's just, you get into it, you get into the adrenaline part of it, but I sent everybody home for five hours. I went to, you know, they caught a little bit of sleep, got to take a shower and come back. We started off fresh. So that, and, you know, we, we kept at it all the next day, and, and that was, that was kind of what happened election, election days.
Commissioner Heiberg and then Commissioner Benniga.
I have two questions, and I'll spill them out, and then you can go from there. One was, I don't know if you answered his question as far as when do we have to count the absentee ballots? At what point can they be counted? And my question.
They, they are only able to count them on, and it's not even count them. They say process those ballots. We can run them through the tabulator on election day. So we, we start, we start it when we get those ballots normally on election day and run them through. We can, we can process them, and that was the, the process that I described, getting up to where we send it out, and it comes back in, and then what we do to get it to the, to the tabulator machine. Only on election day can we do that.
So my other question is, is can we not sort them into precincts ahead of time? Does it not, the outside of the envelope say the precinct number or something that they could have been in all these different boxes? And I, you know, why weren't they sorted ahead of time?
We, we were working on that. That was what was happening, and we, just, they just got ahead of us. And then, so then, then we start talking, well, is, is it over with? There was a couple of stutter steps on there that maybe we thought we could catch up before the day, but, you know, that last week, a week and two days killed us.
So they, but, so they didn't all come in the day of the election day?
Oh, no, no, no. And, and we were working on those, and we had a lot of those sorted out.
Commissioner Benniga.
Oh, she stole my first question. But my other question would be, is that the majority of the ballots that you have on election day that are processed at the precincts, if you will, they don't get in until toward the end of the day? So from the, can you start counting absentee ballots right away at seven AM in the morning?
Yes. And, and normally, that is what we do. And, but, you know, we've got to be careful because if we upload it, keep it stored in the computer or else on a stick if that, if we're done with the absentees. But we can't release anything until eight o'clock due to the time zone, you know, halfway through South Dakota. So eight o'clock's as soon as I can release those numbers. But we can process before, yes.
Sorry. Doesn't that give you a twelve-hour start on the absentee ballots if you'd start at seven AM to start processing those ballots first and then waiting until the rest of the precincts come in?
Yes. Under, under normal circumstances, that's what we did. And we were going to, we already had some stacks of the absentees there that would have been, during a normal election, that would have been what we had. We would have either run those through and been done with those before the ballots from the polling places even come in. That's normally the way we did it. But this time here, the ballots were, kept coming, kept coming, and we had to make a decision as to whether to just wait for the polling place and run them first or, or run them absentees. And if we split them in half when we had an absentee precinct, what's called an absentee precinct, the rest of the night, we were going to start, we're still stuck with that gap until we, we got every last ballot opened and processed. And there would have been a little pile of, let's say, legislature, VP three ballots over here, and another pile of VP six ballots over here as we processed them. Yes. That, that, that would have been it, but we just didn't get her done. Did not get her done.
Commissioner Heiberg.
Well, you keep saying they kept coming in during the day. People were literally dropping off those absentee ballots that day?
The day before they were. On election day in two thousand and fourteen, we got the law changed. There's no absentee voting on, on election day because you're not absent, right up, leading up to it, and the weeks up to it, those were the ones that we still had not, not been able to process.
And so those twelve hours before, you guys were just opening the envelopes and stacking them?
We were still doing checks over there, and then they were, on, on this part of, you know, where our tables were here, yes, they were opening those envelopes and stacking them and getting them ready to tabulate. And we also had tables over there, you know, doing the, doing the sorting process as well. We had, we had eight, between eight to twelve people, I think I mentioned this, eight to twelve people since the start for forty-five days over at that auditor's office, opening and processing and doing what we're supposed to do.
Other questions?
You know, I'd like to talk a little bit about that, too, because, you know, at one point, I considered bringing some more people in, you know? And then, you know, what, what it became then was we, we focused on, well, they won't fit in the office anymore, so are we going to move the whole shooting match over to, where, the election center? Oh, we've got people over there. You know, we've got this COVID distancing thing. How many people can I have in a room? Which leads me to, yep, yep, we could have done better on this election, but how about the next one? You know, what are we going to do there? And COVID rules the roost on this, okay? So what my thoughts are, and, and is, and I'm not there yet, is, is I will tabulate the costs, or, you know, calculate the costs that the people who worked on absentees only did this time. And, and we will look back at the twenty sixteen election, and, because that's the only, that's the closest one I've got that's going to be applicable. We will take the absentee labor costs out of that, and then what's left should be the amount over that we would have spent on top of our absentees. Is that clear? I'm trying to, what I'm trying to say is, our normal, our normal absentee cost for labor should have been around what the twenty sixteen election was. And so I'm going to look at those numbers, get our numbers of this last election, subtract that, and then my, my, my guess is try to extrapolate that into what is, what is, how many people are going to do absentee for this next election? You know, how many are gonna, is COVID going to come out, and, and is the Secretary of State going to drop those things in the mail again? Those are things I don't know. But the thing that I would tell you is, I, I want to be prepared this time, and I need some space to do this in. I need some space for maybe twenty to forty workers. I'm not sure how many there are, but I want these people to, to start in. We start filtering them in, or maybe we jumpstart it with ten people five days after the absentee start, I don't know. But I want to get a separate room to process these ballots for the general election so this does not happen again. How I get to those numbers of people, you know, labor, how much, how much there's going to be, how many absentee ballots are going to be, well, it's a guessing game. I can, I can overstaff that stock if I can find the workers and, you know, guarantee it, but.
Mr. Benniga.
Sorry. Bob and I understand that it's your responsibility, and frankly, this year is the new normal, potentially. I, nobody knows that for sure, but I would have to say that the expectation's going to be that we're going to continue to see a lot more absentee ballots than we ever have before. And I appreciate the fact that financially, you're looking at comparative things to figure out what the costs were of twenty sixteen versus twenty twenty. But I think it might be time to consider having a ad hoc committee, if you will, to review this process, look at suggestions, get the city and the school district involved in the conversation, and come up with maybe some suggestions on operating changes that we might want to look at, that we could lead through some of the elections that we have because I think it's important that accuracy is the number one issue, which we've all talked about for a long time. But we're going to have another November election, and we might have the same significant absentee ballot process. And I think we need to plan for that ahead of time and getting as many opinions to circulate and then come up with a plan, to me, would be something I'd strongly suggest that we try to process and organize. So that would be my suggestion at this point.
Well, Commissioner, do I hear you saying that you'd like to be on that?
I don't think I can do that, but.
I have several people who have come up to me and volunteered to be on that type of a group, though, and I'd be happy to share.
I would be very interested because that, that is.
There's a couple of city councilors that are interested that have reached out to me. So I, I don't think we'd have any trouble staffing that group, so.
I don't think so either because I'm sure all of us have had some input that we need to listen to, of course. And I think it would just show the public that we're, are planning for the next new normal. And I'm personally convinced that you're going to see a lot more absentee ballots for a long time because, first of all, we're not going to be over the COVID nineteen totally by that time. Even if we have a vaccine, it wouldn't have been tested enough by that time. Secondly, people literally found out much, how easy and convenient it was to do an absentee ballot just for the postage cost versus, frankly, standing in line and being subjective to, subjected to other concerns. So I just think it's very important that in the next few weeks that we start that process to check the operational efficiencies and suggestions that all of this might have.
Well, you know, I was, I was, I had thought, you said ad hoc, does that mean?
I don't know if that's the right term because I use any term I can think of, which usually isn't correct.
Well, you know, to me, there's a, there's a formal board, and then there's this one that kind of meets and figures things out by the seat of their pants. And I think that I, number one, I've got to get some data that's relevant to that first in, 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 you know, the cost thing. You know, the, the other thing, you know, there's a, I appreciate you saying about the accuracy thing because that's what we've striven for every time. I also feel the pressure all the time to get things done in a hurry, you know, to hurry up. Every time we've hurried too much, there's been something we've had to go back and fix. Haste makes waste. Somehow, in the, in, in this process, we have come to the conclusion that the faster we put this together and get it done, the better it is. And as I think about that, I'm not so sure that's, that's the way everything else in the world goes, and we've got something as important as voting, and we rush through it, and, and that's that, and that's, that's the big emphasis. You know, so how much taxpayer dollars do I have to spend in order to come up with some quick results? And with those quick results, who is the consumer of those quick results? You know, who's actually using that information, and it's, it's vital to them election night? How many people? And, and so I think about those things. I try to be a good steward of the county dollars. I try to be a, maybe a little bit too tight sometimes, and, you know, so going forward, we will try to speed things up here. We will put together a ad hoc board. Gene, I appreciate you having somebody that would step up. I've got a couple of very good people in mind, myself, that want to come to something like that, and I was going to consult with them on this as well. But if we were going to put some sort of a board together, that would be great, too.
I think it would be great to use that, you know, kind of brain trust. The commission has done that on several different issues that we've focused, and then, you know, allows you the time to think through and put together written processes, written job descriptions of what different people are tasked with, timelines, and all of those kinds of things that we can try to do when the pressure's not on, so that we're, that we can show to the public that it's, we've done the very best we could. And so I appreciate you already looking forward to the next election because I think that is where we need to put our time and energy now, so.
No, I, I'd like to point a couple of other things out, too. A lot of the states that do the vote by mail or, you know, increased absentee, they have an extended timeline in order to process those ballots, all of them, too. California takes up to two weeks. And I know people go, oh, California, that, this, that, and the other thing. They haven't even ever been there, number one, let alone looked into the, the election process there. They take up to two weeks. India, the country of India, takes up to six months to tally their results. Why are we a nation that has to have that instant gratification of having it right now?
Well, part of that's, maybe that's part of what you can use this group to try to balance, and, you know, maybe there's some legislative fixes that are, that might be appropriate here as well, so.
Even, even the media, if we drug out the certain process of tabulating those ballots and making sure everything was right, they'd have two or three days to write stuff instead of just one.
Commissioner Bari.
Thank you. Auditor Bob, I think you did a very good job this time, and I really commend your staff and the other semi-volunteers that came forward. I know that for me, working in VP four or whatever it was, that it was a great experience. And I'll, I'll tell you that there was no surprises to it, but to actually do the process step by step, I think, was educational for me as a citizen. And I know that my wife did not want me to work because I'm too old. But, you know, I've served in the military, and I'm happy to do my duty for this process, which is part of our heritage. And I know that there are going to be issues going forward. I have two questions. One is, can HAVA help us with these expenses or no?
Certain ones they can. And, and I would tell you, I had a conversation with my, my liaison, Mr. Benniga, about purchasing another DS four, eight fifty machine. There are none to be had. Yeah, there won't be any, and I have to, I have to order it from Germany after the first of the year. So this, this election for me to get an extra machine, it's not going to happen. There's a used one out there, but I question why it is used, and I don't necessarily want that. So are there HAVA funds available? HAVA is very strict and very prescriptive in what you can spend that money for. And I think that I could spend that money on a lot of things. Now, that, that, that money is sitting in the, in the state. The Secretary of State tends to that fund, and you're earmarked for me, and I think I got about three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in there. And some of it, honestly, is left over from two thousand and four, which to me, you know, probably should have been used a while ago, but I've kept it because I wanted to make sure that Minnehaha County had the ability to have the latest in election technology. And we've been successful in that. Matter of fact, since two thousand and seventeen, the whole state is on the same system.
So second question. What about the absentee ballots? If a person requested an absentee for the school, city, the primary, do they automatically get one for the November election? Do, do they have to apply again?
On the application, what would be boxed for, but it's not numbered, you can, it asks you what ballots you want, and if you mark all, you get them all.
But I marked.
Yeah. It depends on what they marked on. Some people, they, they, they think they marked all, but they didn't, so.
Well, some people think they're registered Republicans, and they're not also. And, and I'll, I had a couple of people in my polling place that wanted to vote Republican and were disappointed to be NPA, no party affiliation. But I, I would also say that we had a couple of people, just two in my precinct, that brought in their absentee ballot that they had never filled out. They had the ballot, they had the envelope, they tore it up, and we let them vote on site. And I bet that with seventy precincts, you probably had three hundred of those ballots that came in election day that people had never mailed.
Well, you know, it's going to be interesting this election, too, because if you look at the end of that graph, we were still mailing them out the day before the election and, the end of that graph, we were still mailing them out the day before the election and, and on election day. Some people, uh, sense of what the post office is capable of probably isn't accurate. And the post office with their COVID things that they've put in down there is not as fast as they once were. And I think that, uh, I'm still, I'm gonna be seeing quite a, quite a few ballots that will come in late, that will, we simply won't be able to hold. We gotta keep them in a se- a separate box, but I think that number's gonna be the biggest number that I've ever had.
Commissioner Heiberg.
I don't think we addressed in this conversation the numbers that we had yesterday, the, we had it yesterday in our, um, when we canvassed the vote, we had the Republican numbers and Democrats, and there was some confusion about those numbers, which you corrected to the, us, but maybe publicly you should also correct those.
Okay, and, yes, and, and thank you for bringing that up, and you, you know, and the thing was, was I got asked how many Republican voters there were versus Democrat voters, and on this report, um, you know, when I got to the elevator, I looked, and the NPA had zeros in it, which meant they did not do that. Uh, so the, the, I, I still don't have a number of registered Democrat voters in this state today because it's not available on our system, because this is the way this report came out with the zeros on there. Um, working on that, it is a change, uh, in the software that we'll have to make. We'll have to put a formula or a program in there to split those numbers out. Right now, the NPAs and the Dem, and the, the, uh, uh, Independents are queued in with the numbers of the Democrats, and I apologize for that mistake yesterday. As soon as I got to the elevator, uh, my face drained when I saw all those zeros on, on that, on those NPA and the independent columns.
Commissioner Benniga.
One more, and I'm done. Uh, just to clarify, Bob and I did talk about that second machine, and that was, what, six, eight weeks or more ago? And unfortunately, that was the answer that Bob got, so it's not like that was a last, last second process. It was, uh, in the planning for quite a while, and it just didn't happen.
The, the whole nation has updated on these machines, and ESNS happens to be one of the finest, so that's, that's the one that a lot of states have gone with.
All right, any other questions? We appreciate you being here today. We appreciate your willingness to, um, tackle another election, and, uh, we look forward to hearing back from you and, and your group. And I'll get the names to you of the folks that have contacted me and are interested-
That'd be awesome, you know, and, and, no, I've got a, I've got a recounts here for a couple of weeks, but we'll definitely get in touch with them, we'll set something up and, and explain the situation, get the data that they request, and, and see what's happening. So, thank you for suggesting that, and, um, you know, it's, it's, it's gonna cost us some more money, and I don't know how much that is at this point, uh, and I don't even wanna, I don't even wanna take a guess, because, but anyway, we will, we will get that done, okay?